Dr. Stone, you ready? Yes.
We'll call this meeting to order. Start with the roll call. Here.
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 And we'll move into a moment of silent prayer or private reflection. Amen. And the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move, will you approve the agenda?
I'll second it.
Carol Leeden?
Yes.
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 Moving on to 3.1, Dr. Stone.
Dr. Stone?
Okay, just making sure, I was struggling to hear. I am sorry that I have to join you this way, but I am excited that today we're going to be talking about our new policy manual. And just by way of a little bit of background, the trust is a risk management pool formed, owned, and governed by school district members. And as you all know, we are one of the school district members of the trust. So the trust model policy program exists solely because members asked for the trust to get involved in the policy process.
We're just trying to get the volume up a little bit louder, but it's up as well as our long as ever. So, try again, there you go.
So a primary function aboard policy is to ensure district compliance with state and federal law, court decisions, and regulatory guidance. Poorly constructed policies can unintentionally create legal liability for the district, and avoiding this is a core risk management function. A few things of note as we get started. This has been a little bit of a daunting task, but a great opportunity to review all of our policies and associated procedures. Many of our current policies are listed as adopted during the initial policy manual adoption, which was more than two decades ago. ARS, in some cases, has been renumbered or updated, which in many cases is not reflected in our current policies. As you will know, when we go through this process, the trust model policies are much more condensed than our current policies, and they are designed to ensure the district is legally compliant in all areas of policy. They are policies that the trust will back with our prepaid legal services. You will also note there are no exhibits or regulations. Exhibits were typically forms, which will now be kept by each director in their respective departments. If they are staff forms, they will be housed in frontline or the staff portal on the website with all other forms. If they're public forms, we will have them available on our website. Regulations are replaced by procedures. The directors and I are utilizing sample procedures provided by the trust and creating new procedures to ensure that all areas of our current policy manual are covered and available to staff, families, and the general public. All procedures will be provided to the board for review, but do not require a vote. This is the same procedure we have utilized for regulations in the past. So today is a first reading, which we will continue on Thursday if we are unable to finish today. And after our review today and/or Thursday, all of the proposed policies will be available on board docs. The board will then have about a month and a half to seek clarification, request any additions or deletions to the policies, and final adoption of the entire policy manual will be an action item on our June agenda. It is also important to note that as we continue through this process, at any time that we see an area that needs to be addressed, we can add, change, or delete policies and procedures. Are there any questions before we get started? Okay, so I do not hear any, and I am going to go ahead and start with 1-100, these are now done by number instead of letters. And the first section is 1-100, Board Authority and Responsibilities. 1-101 is the district's legal designation and district boundaries. As you can see, we've added the name of the school district to Mojave County. And we have removed the one option because we are not an accommodation school. The rest remains the same. If you have questions at any time, please feel free to stop me. Much of this is a quick review, as if there is no highlighting. It applies to policy that we already have. The highlighting are places where they added options or things for us to consider moving forward.
Just a quick question, what is an accommodation school?
I don't honestly know. It is something in the state of Arizona. Does anyone else know?
Yeah, accommodation district is generally associated with the county, so the county runs a school.
Alright, so if we move to 1-102, the Board Authority, Responsibilities, and Immunities. It simply puts all of these things in one policy instead of having them in multiple policies. There are a list of responsibilities included but not limited to, as you can see there. They talk clearly about individual board member authority and responsibilities. They move to oath of office and governing board immunities. And again, these are all part of policies that we currently have. They've just condensed them into one policy. If we move down to board member requests for information, you can see that that's highlighted in yellow. This was an option. All requests from board members for information requiring data collection by district staff shall be made to the superintendent. The superintendent's response to such request shall be provided to all board members. That is not new. The second part, though, and I think each of you need to consider this, and we can talk about it this time or talk about it Thursday, is if a board member requests information requiring data collection that is estimated to entail over two hours of staff time, the superintendent is authorized to deny the request. In that event, the requesting board member may file a written request to ask that the superintendent's decision be reconsidered at the next scheduled regular governing board meeting for board discussion and possible board approval. This requirement pertains only to an individual request by an individual board member. I can tell you personally, we have not come across this concern, but it is just something for you all to consider if we would like to leave it in or take it out. The second part is about communication protocols. Communication from community members or employees directly to the board shall be directed to the district administration for processing. The board will not consider or refer anonymous communications, and the superintendent shall deliver official communications to the community on behalf of the board. This is our current operating protocol, so I did leave that in, but just wanted you to know that they had listed it as optional. Any questions about that?
Just for clarification, so all requests from board members, that would be an individual board member, as one of us came to you and asked you for information. We're not, this doesn't pertain to an inquiry made from the board as a whole.
Correct. And again, as we go through these, we can come back to this on Thursday to kind of rediscover anything that we want to decide about changing, taking out, anything of that nature. So I'm going to move on to 1-103, which is governing board organization.
Sorry, I was thinking for a second and didn't pause. So just to kind of, to make sure we're kind of moving things along in a good way, would it be preferable if we know, if we want to do some of these options to say so now, or say, let's hold and wait and kind of come to that decision as we keep going through these? Or would it be better just to kind of leave it up in the air?
I'm perfectly fine if you want to have the discussion now and share if you want to leave it in, take it out, tweak it in some way.
I'm, for both of these, I'm in favor of putting them both in. If we all agree, I think we should do that and move on. If we don't agree, maybe we think about it and go till next time. Does that sound good when we come up to these optional ones?
I agree with you.
I do agree, the only, I can tell you that I will want to discuss a little bit about the statement that the board will not consider or refer anonymous communications. I know that that's been a longstanding policy. It does give me pause, though, because I do think that if, if there's an employee who or communicates something to an individual board meeting, or board member on the condition of confidentiality, I don't think that that should mean that the board member cannot consider or discuss that with you. And the way it's worded makes it feel like, well, unless they're willing to sign their name to an email, that it's not something that board member can consider, I'm not sure that I agree with that.
So let's go ahead, if everybody is in agreement of saying the first optional one is good and the second one will wait till Thursday?
I'll second that.
I would be okay with that as well.
Okay.
We're not, we're not making motions just because it's a work.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Right.
So anything that we're all in agreement on, we'll say, good. Anything we're not, we'll star and come back to on Thursday.
Okay, so option one, we're good with, under request for information. And for communication protocols, we'll come back to that. Okay, so are we okay to move forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so 1-103 is governing board organization. And again, much of this is exactly as we operate now. The only thing that was highlighted is that the organizational meeting, the board may elect, and it just said, put whatever positions in there you wanted. We currently elect a vice president. So I went ahead and put that in. And then it clearly says, in the absence of an elected officer at the board meeting, board members present at any meeting could designate a board member to assume the duties of the president for that meeting. So in this case, if both our president and vice president were absent, we would still have a quorum of three members, but you would have to designate who's going to be the president for that meeting. The rest of it remains the same.
Sounds good.
So 1-104 is legal advice and representation. This entire policy was optional, but I do think it's important to have. You will see several references here to in-house counsel. And while we don't have in-house counsel, if at any time the board wanted to employ their own counsel, I think it's important to have it in the policy that you could do so. So they are part of the definition there. It's an attorney, it's an attorney who is an employee of the district. For the county attorney, I believe we would use option two. They're the statutory attorney for the district and may serve as the district's legal counsel for any manner, any matter for which the county attorney has no conflict of interest. However, the board hereby waives any right to representation by the county attorney on any matter for which outside counsel or in-house counsel represents the district. As you know, we do have prepaid legal services through the trust, so most, if not all, of our matters are handled through that legal body. But it is still important to note that the county attorney could represent you if you so chose, and obviously, in-house counsel could also represent you if at some point you decided to hire.
My only question on this is where does TOSCA appear in this? Our, our TOSCA attorney? Where does she fall into this?
She's part of the trust, isn't she? Prepaid legal.
She's prepaid legal. Okay.
She would currently be considered outside counsel through the trust, which is our prepaid legal.
Okay.
Obviously, I left the option in for in-house legal counsel. Should you ever decide to do so, it's obviously not a requirement. It's just there if you choose to do that. And then the bottom section, the board president and the superintendent are authorized to communicate with legal counsel. That is how we operate now. But the board president or the superintendent may authorize another board member to consult with legal counsel for matters directly relating to the responsibilities of the board. I'm perfectly fine leaving that in. It is totally up to you as the board. Anyone have questions about this option?
I don't have a problem with leaving that as, as it is.
Anyone else?
I'm okay with leaving it in.
I'm good with it, too.
I think we're all good.
I think we're all okay with it.
Okay. So we're going to move on to 1-105, which is board member conflicts of interest. This is exactly the policy we have at this time. There were choices about making purchases from a board member only if the following conditions have been met. Obviously, for our district, it would be the one with 3,000 or more students. The other option has been crossed out because we obviously have more than 3,000 students. Again, this entire policy is, is what we have now. You all sign a conflict of interest statement each year. Any questions about that one? Okay, so moving on to 1-301. This, 1-300 is all about our governing board meetings. 1-301 is all about the rules of order. This is how you currently operate as a board. There's nothing different in here. It's how motions are made and how a motion passes. And moving on to 1-302, governing board meetings and open meeting law requirements. These, again, are straight from statute and how you currently operate. There are definitions for the different types of meetings, committees, and all of those things, their frequency and location of board meetings, our board meeting notices, when they need to be made, and who they need to be made to. Emergency meetings and how they are handled. The board meeting agendas and how those are developed. How it relates to advisory committees or special committees. The resuming of a recessed meeting. The public participation in board meetings and how that is also handled. Meeting minutes and how those are addressed. And again, these are straight from policies that we currently have, and it is the way that the board operates. It's straight from ARS as well. Any questions about that?
I don't have any questions.
I don't either.
I think we're good.
So moving on to 1-303, adoption, revision, suspension, and repeal of board policies. There were two options here. Unless otherwise required by law, the board may exercise its discretion to consider and adopt a policy at a single board meeting or after two or more board meetings. That is currently how you operate. What, once we have first reading, the board always has the right to waive a second reading and adopt the policy at a single board meeting unless it is something that requires two or more board meetings for adoption. So I stuck with option one. Option two is just worded a little bit differently.
I'm fine with keeping things the way they are.
And I do think it kind of clarifies that. I think it's been confusing in the past that board members, including myself, just assumed that we had to have two readings. If there was a first reading, we'd have to have a second reading. I don't think we understood that we could have voted on it to just have the one reading instead of going to a second one. So I, I feel like this clarifies that. Option one, yes.
Okay. Any other questions about that one? Okay, we're going to move on to 1-400, which are parent and legal guardian rights. This, again, combines many policies that address our parents' and legal guardians' rights in education. They come directly from ARS and how we are working with our families. So you can see the definition. There's the protected rights and bill of rights. There's a development of procedures as to how parents can participate in schools, addressing their concerns about anything, learning materials, instructional activities. These are not different. And then their access to information. I did leave number three highlighted here in case anyone had something that they felt was necessary to put in other than the two that are there. And I will also, Jamie and I can review this as well to make sure that everything's included as it comes to instruction. I believe all of that is clarified above as they do have the right to review all of our instructional materials, all of our lessons. But I just wanted to make sure that this was still there in case anyone had anything they wanted to add.
I think this is one I'd like to look over and come back to, just to make sure. Because other information is necessary. I'm like, oh, could be a lot of things to, to kind of put in, and put in there. So obviously, I wouldn't want it to be, "other information is necessary" in the policy. But I, I'd like a chance to look over this and, and see if I feel there's.
Absolutely. We, we wouldn't have it say, "other information is necessary." We would want it to be whatever specifics that anyone wanted us to put in. So just something to consider, and, and we can look at this one before it comes back for final adoption in June.
Could we just, on number three, make it, "other information is necessary" is the definitive way that we say that we could put something else in there?
I, I would be uncomfortable with that because that could be just about anything.
Yeah.
So I, as long as we can figure out, I, I'm just not sure if this covers everything, so I just want a chance to look it over to see if I can find something.
Yeah.
Alright. And that's the final section for chapter one that I'm presenting. You will hear a little bit more about chapter one when we get to Mr. Moss and Student Services, but that's the final section of chapter one. So if everybody's okay, I'm going to move on to chapter two. Chapter two is pretty short. It's 2-101, which is duties of the superintendent. And this is very much the same as our other policies. It just combines them into one. These are things that come straight from administrative code or Arizona revised statute. Again, nothing different than we have now. And 2-201 is the evaluation of the superintendent. Between July 1 and September 30th, the board accepts the standards or goals. And it's, it's the document that we have, that was approved in the past. That is what we typically use. And then I crossed out option one because the contract does not provide for different timelines. We just use the, on an annual basis, you evaluate the superintendent's performance. It has to occur in executive session unless the superintendent demands that it occur in a public meeting, and it may be in writing or verbal. So that, that is also nothing new. I just took out the option where a contract could provide for a different timeline.
I am perfectly good with option two. Looks like we're all good.
And that is literally the end of chapter two. Okay, any questions about chapters one or two so far?
I don't have any.
I'm good to go.
Alright, and we will move on to chapter three.
Chapter three, I have chapters three 100, three 200, three 300, 400, and 500. So there are, as Dr. Stone mentioned, there are some overlaps between different directors in some of these policies. I will preface that, as Dr. Stone mentioned in the beginning, that these policies seem to be pretty simplified. And the reason behind that is we've gone through these, comparing new policy with the old policies. Many of the old policies were very detailed, and this policy simply references the source of the information or is providing that information on many, many, many pages. So for example, through my policies, there's a lot of references to the USFR, which is found on the Auditor General's website, the Arizona Department of Ed. And the policy is simply pointing the individual to that source rather than outlining the source and that information within the policy.
So just kind of logistics with that, so if somebody was reviewing the policy, there would be a link there in the policy, or?
Not necessarily a link, but there would be, sometimes there's a link to statute, but it would, it would reference the, the actual source, like for example, the format prescribed by the Auditor General. So someone would then have to look at, for budget adoption, what that format looks like through the Auditor General's office.
Yeah, and the, the only reason why I mention it is because that gives another layer of complexity of monitoring links while we're doing it. So however we can do, to minimize the number of links is always a good idea.
I, I think as the source updates their information, we always have the most recent and current information. So I think that's the, the, the nice thing about these policies is we're constantly referring to the source rather than pre-printed or past-printed copies. referring to the source rather than pre-printed or past-printed copies of the, of the policy. So 3-101's budget adoption. It does still reference our old policies, DB, DBF, DBI, DBJ. Again, simplified version of it as the policy points to the source of that information. The option down at the bottom of that policy is something that we do currently have in policy DBJ. This is something that every budget, revision, adoption, anywhere where it's applicable, I put this wording that pertains to this section in the action item so that you're automatically seeing it during that budget time where you're actually getting that in front of you as part of the action item and getting your approval at that time. And it's simply just stating that, that in the MNO budget or in the MNO fund, as we budget to MNO, there are several subsections to that. There's program 100, 200, 300. 100 is regular education, 200 is special ed, 300 is CTE. So they all have their different budgets allocated to them. What this option allows for is that sometimes when things happen during the year, you may exceed a certain subcategory's budget and may not exceed it in another subcategory, but at the end, the overall general budget limit, which, which it's referring to, as long as that's not exceeded, then we're okay. So it allows for that flexibility to have some over expenditures in one subcategory and not as much in another subcategory as long as we're not exceeding the overall budget limit. That's, that's the, the main thing. We want to make sure we're always not spending more than what we receive or budgeted to receive from the state. So that option is in policy DBJ, and we would like to continue to have that in this policy.
I am good with that.
So am I.
3-102 talks about revenue. Policy, old policy DFA is part of, of, of the language here within this chapter and group. It does reference the USFR again as the source. We do have current practices of, through resolution that I bring to you every year for those operating procedures where you approve the resolutions. One of those resolutions involves the county treasurer, authorizing the county treasurer to take care and manage our money and invest it in an appropriate way. So that's part of the, one of the resolutions of the 10 or 11 that come to you every year. Any questions with 3-102? 3-103, expenses and payroll. Again, this still references old policy of DKA, GDBC, GDL. All of the practices that we currently have are still outlined in this new policy. Compensation package comes to you each year. Vouchers come to you every month. All of these are outlined within this policy. Those practices are, are ongoing and current. Chapter 3, 104, property controls. Again, referencing the USFR. We do have a fixed asset module within our financial software system where we manage our assets. You do have, we do have the purchasing and warehouse module is where we're, as well that assists us in the purchasing of needed supplies and equipment for the district. We have a warehouse module that helps us with inventorying those supplies that we may have on hand. So 3-104 does reference our old, our old policy is embedded within this, policy DID and ECA. EDC and EDBA are also included within this new policy. Any questions on that policy? 3-105, disposition of property. Again, referencing the USFR as the source as to how to do that and the guidelines as to how to dispose of property. That is our, we do have current practices in place every month. In the consent agenda, you do see that disposal of property section. Most of the time, we have some items in there. There may be a month or two where there is nothing there to, that we're actually asking you to approve to dispose, but surplus property and disposing of property, all of that is included within this new policy 3-105. Chapter 3-106, federal grant and other funding sources. DDA of our old policy is the source in which we can tie this back to. These practices are current. We do submit proposals to, or we do submit for grant funding from time to time. We do have employees who also reach out to try to obtain goods such as crowdsourcing websites and whatnot. So we do have policies in place and procedures in place to make sure that that's all done in compliance with policy. That's 3-106. You're also, every month, you also have that consent agenda item where you accept the gifts and donations as part of your responsibility as a board. 3-107 is the fiscal accounting and financial reporting. Old policies ICDI and DIA are included within this new policy 3-107. It does talk about the annual financial report and putting together all of the information and reports and making the necessary presentations to the board throughout the year in regarding financial accounting. So these are ongoing practices that we, we continue to do and will continue to highlight and, and practice in use of policy 3-107. Any questions so far? 3-108 for audits. Policy, old policies DIE and, well, actually just DIE on this one. Current practice does align with, with policy both old and this proposed new. Independent auditors are chosen, roll call votes, as we just had that happen, I believe it was last month, in accepting the USFR and the Act for. We are aligned with not only past policy, but again, continuing to be in alignment with this proposed new policy in 3-108. Our website is up to date where that displays the proper information of every dollar spent in the classroom as per the Auditor General. Policy 3-109, procurement. This policy does include our old policy of DJE, DJER. It does outline procurement practices, dollar thresholds, the practice of allowing records to be up for public inspection. All of our current practices do align with this policy of 3-109. 3-201, facilities. That references our old, our old policy of FCB is included within this new policy of 3-201 where we can allow others to use the facility. We have, there's a provision in here that talks about charter, charter school or private usage, private school usage of facilities. We have construction and maintenance and minimum adequacy standards, which is from the school SFOB, the School Facilities Oversight Board. All of these are current practices that we follow here in the district. 3-202, facility use. Policy KF is what we currently have in place. The language in KF is embedded in this new policy of 3-202. We talk about short-term facility use and leasing of facilities. The district has a facility use manual that comes to the board that will be more, more frequently coming to the board, but on an annual basis. We've talked about this internally where we might change some wording in one of the procedures or the old regulation that allows us to reference that facility use manual that you will see and adopt each year. 3-203 with visitors. Old policy GBGB and KI, also KFA. Some of that language is embedded within this new policy of 3-203 where it talks about the superintendent establishing controls for, and procedures for those who would like to visit district property. And it also references and outlines public conduct on school property as well. That outline, again, found in our current policy and then again referenced here in the new policy 3-203. 3-301 going into the 300 series with food service. Policy EF is our current policy. It is referenced here in 3-301. The board each year will establish food meal prices. That'll be coming to you, I believe, either this month or in June. We do this each year where you approve the meal prices for students, staff, and any visitors. Nutrition standards are outlined within this policy, and the outlining of following the federal programs are also embedded within this policy. There is an option here that we have elected to strike out. This is, this is in relation to seniors. The board may authorize the preparation of meals for those over the age of 60 and their spouses is permitted by state law. There's a special program that you have to be engaged with at the state and federal level to allow this to happen. We, we've never had that. We don't have a program within the district that specifically supports those that are age 60 or older.
Yeah, I'm okay with leaving that out.
3-302 with transportation. Current policy EEAA and EEAEAR, EEAG are included within 3-302. It talks about eligible students, student ridership, conduct on, on the buses, private vehicle usage, bus driver certification, outlines school vehicles. So all of these are within our current policy and current practices with the district.
There are a couple of things highlighted at the end. I was just wondering why they were highlighted.
Where's that at?
It was in the policy, in the legal authority area. Can the student support services?
Oh, they have, that's just from the trust. They have those highlighted from time to time as a, as a reference. So there's some commercial codes there. I don't know if there's, if that's gonna actually be hyperlinked to where you can access that or not. As I was pushing through it, when we had this information, they, they weren't going anywhere. So I don't know if that's to come once these are adopted.
Okay, so it's no real reason.
It's a reference, yeah, a reference point, just like Arizona statute. Policy 3-401 is safety and emergency management. Some of these, again, this is where some of these overlap between the different departments and directors. We, we do have practices in place where we have security plans and procedures. We have fingerprint verifications for our, for those who wish to volunteer and be in our school facilities, especially those who will be working outside of the supervision or eyesight of a staff member. So those practices are in place. Current policy EB is the policy that overlaps with this new policy 3-401. And I don't know, are you, do you take any of that for 3-401? For school safety or, or, we've been trying to coordinate somewhat with who's going to elaborate further, but the, the policy's pretty straightforward. We do have a safety team that meets regularly as well to address those safety concerns and talk about safety needs within the district.
I do have a question. Okay, so it talks about the district shall require all volunteers to provide clearance, and then it says the district shall comply with requisite notification requirements regarding sex offenders and juveniles who have been adjudicated as dangerous or sex offenders. So does that, I, I would assume if someone applies to be a volunteer, but then they have this in their background, they would not be accepted as a volunteer. Is that correct?
I can speak to our volunteer procedures. We manage them through Human Resources.
Okay.
So if a community member, parent, guardian wants to participate in our schools, they first go to the school site directly. They have the immediate relationship with that person. The school site can then say, yes, we would like to have you volunteer, or they may decline if there have been contentious relationships with that said person. If they accept, they fill out an application regarding the nature of their visit to our school, and then that comes to Human Resources. Should, like Mr. Murray said, they be out of the line of sight, maybe they're going to do small group reading, like our pet partners, they'll take kids into the hall and do small group reading. Then they go through a fingerprint clearance process that the district pays for, which is outlined in statute. If anything comes up on there, if there's a felony conviction, then no, those people, we inform them that I'm sorry you did not pass this background check, which we're required to, to do. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Yes.
3-402.
Mike, before, before you move on, if we can go back to the previous policy where you asked about what those two that were highlighted were. One is the Code of Federal Regulations, and the other one is the United States Code, and it's a supplement. I, it's likely that those weren't included in our policies before, which is why they're highlighted this time.
3-402 is outlining records. We currently have policy EHB that outlines and highlights the records retention schedule and the policy and procedure in doing so. 3-402 takes much of that same wording, condenses it a little bit as it refers to the Arizona Public Records Act and the Parents' Bill of Rights. But 3-402 does align with EHB. 3-403 with technology. Does align with our current policy of IJNDB. Most of the wording within this is the appropriate use, outlines the appropriate use of technology and internet safety. Any type of parental notifications are outlined in 3-403. I don't believe that much of this, obviously, has been a little bit condensed, but I believe most of the wording is in complete alignment with our current policy.
It's good stuff.
Does any part of this policy have to be updated because we're doing one-to-one technology with high school students next year? Or does this apply regardless of whether they're using our technology or their own?
I think this would apply regardless, and for one-to-one, we will have a handbook and paperwork that parents and students would sign for appropriate technology use.
The superintendent is right. As somebody who's in the technology department, I, I'm retiring from my business, but technology applies to everything, and the rules that we have on the screen apply to everything. So it's good.
3-404.
Does the policy deal with AI? Any of those kind of ethical aspects?
Sorry, I didn't hear. Which policy are you referencing?
3-403.
Okay.
There's, there's no specific reference to AI. I'm not sure if our.
I just don't know.
I'm not sure if our technology handbook, though, will reference that in the future. I know that they've been working on that as we prepare to migrate to one-to-one.
It kind of does, but it doesn't at the same time because it leaves it open, you know, unauthorized access disclosure. And I think that would be, you know, for example, on a teacher, think, you know, for example, doesn't have turn it in listed in the policy, but, you know, teachers use that plagiarism software.
I was thinking like chatbot.
Yeah, and so that would come more, I think, in a, what do we call it? Handbook type of thing than it would be. And this leaves it open for us to kind of say, look at the handbook and then the handbook is updated by us regularly as needed.
Yeah, to provide more detail as you feel that we need to provide.
I think.
Three dash four zero four is the topic of insurance. It talks about liability coverages, health and accident, life and disability for employees. We currently have these items in place as our current policy EI. So three dash four zero four just simplifies things, but it is our current practice. Three dash five zero one pertains to elections. Nothing here has changed. Everything proposed in three dash five zero one, I believe the outline is, I really enjoy the format. It's very easy to read, very, the subsections are clearly identified. I prefer and I really enjoy, as I was, we were talking about how we were all reviewing the policies over the last several weeks, that this was one of the sections, these last two or three that I have actually, I think spell it out really clearly as far as elections go. Talks about appropriate ways to communicate, what to do, what's allowed, what's not allowed, what to be careful of. Three dash five zero two, budget override and bond accountability. We do align with this. Every year between September first and October thirty-first, I present the presentation as to what our bond expenditures have provided for us over that year. Try to provide pictures that show what we've done as far as improvements in utilizing bond monies over the course of the year. So these are our current practices in three dash five zero two. Three dash five zero three, this is the last one that I have, is use of school resources. This, again, it kind of outlines, goes, ties in this whole section, relates to elections. There's clear language there as to what you should be doing and how you should be acting in regards to what you can say and what you need to be careful of, those things that you could wear or voicing your opinion, whether you're an employee or not, it's okay to talk about things in a certain environment away from the school setting. So just, again, using district facilities, using district resources during a time of election and for those things are definitely communicated in here and outlined as to what is acceptable and what's not. And that was three dash five zero three.
I just want to pause for a second and just kind of reiterate what we're doing here just in case the public is watching. This isn't that we're changing all of the policies that we have everywhere. This is, we're just moving from ASBA. We had a policy manual that was kind of provided, well, we managed it based on their assumptions.
Yeah.
And we're moving, and they did not back us up with legal representation if one of the policies they set us is wrong, to the trust, which is basically condensed and kind of, what do you say, kind of organized these just in a little bit of a different way, but not really changing anything. In fact, if we find that something has changed that we didn't see, we can bring this up and be a part of a board meeting at any time. So it's really more of a double check right now to make sure that our policy is matching up with this new one that then is backed up by the trust with legal authority. So as we look at it as board members, anytime, to me, this is a great review. You know, it's been a long time since I really went through and looked through all of these and it's reminding me what's in here. And I think we're finding some of these as we move forward are things that we want to kind of maybe look at and revisit and see how things are. But overall, our goal is just to kind of make sure that this is something that matches what we had before.
In my area, most of what I have has to do with timelines. So dates is a big part of my world financially and meeting those dates and deadlines to submit financials to the state. And then the procedures as to how to procure dollar thresholds, as to when we need to receive written quotes or go out for formal bid. Most of that doesn't change unless there's some big change at the state or federal level.
Although it is all now backed up by the trust.
Correct.
ASBA was my idea to get out of that.
We are saving money too, but we'll talk about that at the board meeting. At the general war.
All right. Can you all hear me?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So moving on to chapter four, human resources. I'll echo what Mr. Murray said. The majority of what we do with regards to employment is driven by statute, Fair Labor Standards Act, US Code, and administrative code. So much of this is extremely condensed. Our current policy manual kind of duplicates itself. It has a policy for certificated staff and then a policy for support staff. So as I go through these, you'll see that they are now combined together, which will make it a lot easier for our administrative team to be able to navigate these when they're looking for an evaluation, policy, it's all now together in one. So I have a very lengthy list of all the policies that were condensed. I can share those if needed, but I'll just save a little time to let you know that that is why this is a lot shorter than it was in the past. We aren't duplicating policies based on the different employee designations. So we'll start with employment protocols. Four dash one oh one, the board authority to employ. We do this annually with our salaries, wages, and benefits. You see that and then you get to approve those packages. And every month on our consent agenda, we provide you with the human resources report. You also have the authority to issue non-renewals should we need to go that route with our staff. There are no changes here and this encompasses approximately twelve other policies, but then points you right to the statutes where those are designated. Four dash one oh two, staff assignments. This addresses the positions where we do bring to you new job descriptions as we restructure and change our organization. It also clarifies that you may approve our work calendars, which are driven by our academic calendar that the student achievement team brings to you. And it also clarifies on transferring of staff from one program to another, one school to another. Some of this is also included in our contract language, so our staff are seeing it annually. And then it designates the duties of our principals and teachers. Four dash one oh three, this is our evaluation systems. We have recently, in the last couple of years, brought you our new instrument for evaluating our administrators. This just gives you the authority to adopt those instruments. A couple of months ago, you adopted a new support staff evaluation tool that will take effect next fiscal year. Right before coming on, you also adopted the new director evaluation as well and it just lists every classification of employee that we have and designates you the authority to adopt the instrument and then outlines the statutory requirements of those different evaluation tools. So for example, our teacher evaluation does have a student achievement component related to it that's driven by statute. It's twenty percent of their evaluation. A couple of things in here that we needed to modify to make current with what we're doing is regard to incentives and protections for certificated teachers. Currently, we do not offer multi-year contracts to our staff that are in the highest performance classification, so you'll see these ones have been taken out. We also do not take people in the highest performance classification and reassign them to schools with D or Fs. Happy to announce we don't have schools with a D or an F, so we don't plan to need to do that. And we do want our staff working in a facility that they feel good about whenever possible. The rest of these are pretty specific to LHUSD, the definition of inadequate performance. Our evaluation tool does not use the word domain or rating scales. We use the five core propositions. So you'll see those changes are just there to align with our semantics. And then the item C, we did drop that. You'll notice C and D are worded very similarly and we chose to go with option D. So if a teacher receives a performance classification of ineffective on their annual summative evaluation, that could meet the definition of inadequate performance along with the other options shown on the screen. The evaluation schedule is also listed here. We do comply with this currently. We bring you a list of qualified evaluators annually. Our district's timeline was a little bit more condensed, so we did update to reflect that within five days of an evaluator and a certificated teacher having that conversation, that post-conference, they may respond and acknowledge that that meeting took place. And then it just clarifies that their response will be kept with the evaluation and that's a current practice. We just do it within five days. Item M was optional. This is a current practice in our district and it is in the teacher evaluation framework. If we have a teacher, a continuing teacher, which means they are in their fourth year or more with the district and they are in one of the two highest performance classifications, that second observation can be waived. And that has already been previously approved, so we wanted to keep that in there. And then definitions of improvement plan requirements. When we go the route of inadequate performance, we do make efforts to support them in their growth and development. Professionals and concerns are separate. And then the other thing specific to LHUSD is the alternative performance evaluation cycle. This is our highly effective teacher observation pathway and it just outlines the timeline that we've adopted in LHUSD. A highly effective teacher shall be evaluated one time every three years. In the two years that they're not being evaluated, they are working on a specific professional development pathway. That might be pursuing a master's degree. It might be leading professional development in their area of expertise across the district. We have about eight options that they can pick from. Any questions on one oh three evaluations? One oh four, employee discipline. This condenses a handful of policies into one, which will be really helpful for our staff and our administrators to understand the procedures as well as the expectations. There are not a lot of changes here. This just really outlines what is considered non-disciplinary, so these are those verbal warnings, letters of direction, and what is disciplinary. Like Mr. Murray already said, this is a breath of fresh air because it is just one, two, three, four. It is very simple and easy to apply and follow. And there are no changes here. Again, most of this is driven by statute. Employee termination. Again, it just points right back to statute for our certificated employees. A lot of that is covered in the evaluation process as well. And then at-will, that's the other subdivision of our employees. We have certificated and at-will. This was an option we wanted to keep for you all to consider. Unless an at-will support staff or other non-certificated employee receives a notice of appointment for the succeeding school year or is rehired by the action of the board, the employee's employment shall automatically terminate at the end of the school year or on June thirtieth with no action by the board. So should we have a struggling staff member and we don't want to offer them a contract, an at-will notice of employment, then we don't have to go through the termination process. We can just let that lapse. That is not in our current policy, so that would be one for your consideration. And then term employees, it's the same language as the support staff or the at-will. We do not have any term employees, but we did want to leave them in in case the need should arise down the road. But it is the same thing, that there would not need to be action by the board if we chose not to offer them an extension or another notice of employment.
I'm okay with those options. Are you?
Yeah, I'm okay with leaving those in.
Okay. And then it goes through your hearing process and your participation in that should it be needed. Four dash one oh six, reduction in force. This is the outline of the procedures that would be used if a RIF were needed, if we were not able to absorb through attrition staffing cuts, should they ever have to happen. And these are the guidelines that we could use to determine which employees would need to be riffed. This is nice because it's open, one or more of the following. Personnel records. This just establishes what goes into the file, what's kept separately under the prohibited content. And then retention schedules, like Mr. Murray shared, those are also followed. And then the confidentiality and access requirements that we are mindful of and follow. Four dash two oh one, employer responsibilities and our code of conduct. This one also condensed several. It condensed our staff ethics, tutoring for pay, which kind of goes with staff ethics. It does address copyright, which I know you had mentioned. So on behalf of employees, they would need to be mindful of the content as well. And then professional duties, responsibilities. It's all now here in one instead of spread across approximately twelve to fifteen policies. It has a list, a very thorough, comprehensive list of twenty-five things they shall do and just as many things they shall not do. It also addresses use of physical force for our students that may need restrained or in the event that there were, or physical altercation, how our staff can intervene. I do get that question a lot and I was glad to see it defined here. Any questions on that one? Four dash two oh two, staff and student boundaries. Again, employer responsibilities. These are things that our staff shall not do to protect our students and it defines that they shall behave in a professional, legal, and ethical manner. And student supervision. This is here to protect us against claims of not providing adequate supervision. It spells out what is the reasonable expectation as provided in statute. The next policy, four dash two oh four, mandatory reporting, also driven by federal and state law. This one, Mr. Moss and I have collaborated on. There will be some procedures that follow up with this. This is what we currently do and how we currently operate. There were no changes here. This one is also very refreshing. It's very straightforward, to the point. It's very straightforward, to the point. Drug-free, alcohol-free workplace. This update was nice, given the changes to legalization of marijuana. All of that is reflected and captured in here very well, just that staff members may not be under the influence while working. Defines all the different substances that we might encounter and any exceptions that we would need to take into consideration for, for medical reasons. And again, with tobacco, no changes here. And then 300s, employee health and welfare. This is our communicable diseases, notification, immunizations. This allows for us to request a doctor's note should an employee need to be absent for more than three workdays. And that we do provide an employee assistance program for the health and welfare of our staff. The employee leave section probably has the most changes because our policy is very unique. Over the years, we have gotten feedback from our auditors that our leave policy is, what do they call it? Like trying to track the bouncing ball. It is one that we are looking to make some modifications to. So our definitions are here. You will see procedures for each of these that are more detailed, but we just left in there that we shall require them to, our staff, to use accrued leave for any leave of absence as permitted by law. And then you'll see as we go through the procedures that that's most all of these, but that will be spelled out. Earned paid sick leave. Our current sick leave is, they start off, our, our teachers start with four days in their first year. We have found that to be pretty problematic. One flu bug and they're out of sick days. So in their second year, they would go to five, and then they would go to six. Eventually, by year five, they would have eight sick days, which is a little less than one per month. So working with the trust, this was a suggestion, a sort of a model leave plan, and I know that our auditors have said this yearly adding of another day is really difficult to track and for our business department to be able to account for the payout on that and make sure that we're balancing. So we would like to propose that each employee shall be credited with a total annual maximum allocation of earned paid sick time at the rate of one day per month, up to 12 days determined by the contract length. 12-month employees will be allocated 12 days of earned paid sick time. 11-month employees will be allocated 11 days and so forth. So our, our teaching staff, their 10-month employees, they would have 10 days of sick leave, and they could be used for any reason as outlined under Arizona law, which will come to you in the procedure. So that is a consideration because it is different than what we've been doing, but it's under the advice of the auditors and the attorney from the trust. I can tell you're waiting. I can pause or I can keep going.
I, I am, I'm sort of processing. So at the start of a school year, would you start then with the 12 days to trickle down? Okay. It's not like you have to work a month and then you get, okay.
Correct. We would be in favor of front-loading. Kind of the trend we see is our newest staff, for lack of a better word, they get into our Petri dishes. And usually around October, November is when they have their first more significant flu, and we wouldn't want for them to have to take leave without pay at that time. It's just the cycle, you know, that, that we all experience and have experienced since we were young kids, and we'd like for them to have their leave available to use as needed, and we would like for them to, to manage it accordingly, just from the onset. We also have personal leave. There are no changes here. We currently award four personal days. And then it defines this might be for personal illness, if you ran out of sick leave, family illness, emergency situations, personal business, things of that nature.
One more question before we move on. For family leave, I did have a question come up about a month ago, but does family leave only apply if it's your direct, your immediate family, or can it also apply if it's an in-law's family?
So in our procedure on Family Medical Leave Act, it does clearly define who is considered a qualified family member, and it is immediate. It is not in-laws. Vacation leave. Currently, vacation leave is only available to full-time equivalent 12-month employees. So that is option one kind of that we're taking, just who benefits from vacation leave. It is our, our 12-month employees. The procedure will spell out how each different employee group earns and can accrue vacation year over year. So no, no changes. We'll show you the changes on the procedure. This is a thing we don't have in policy. I've actually had administrators request that we put something like this in policy. So the use of vacation and personal leave will typically be denied for the day before or after a holiday break, holiday or break, excuse me. So that's the day before we go on winter break. We would like our staff there supporting our students. These are typically times when important wrap-up things are happening, whether it's finalization of grades, communication with parents if they have questions. And it's also a very challenging time to find substitutes. During the week of state testing or site-specific parent-teacher conferences, we feel very strongly that we need all staff, all hands on deck for those things. And then our pre-week, when we're doing all of our organizational meetings, and our first week with our students. Those are really key times, as well as the last week of the instructional year. Now supervisors do have the authority to make exceptions in the case of a documented illness, bereavement, or something special, an emergency circumstance. So we're going to recommend that we have a definition here of times where our supervisors can say, I think you can wait one more day to drive to your seminary. Please be here on the last day for your students.
The only recommendation I would make is possibly not having this apply at the beginning of this year. And the only reason I say that is because we did just recently change the school calendar, and that might have caught some employees by surprise, that they might have already made vacation plans. So I guess we can discuss this as a board more in-depth, but just off the cuff, I, I do think that we might delay the start of that policy.
Do they, when they're coming back, I know before it was like, not, not the new ones, but the, the continued ones were back the week before, right?
Yes.
So this, this year, is it the week before, like the Thursday they're coming back, or are they coming back on the Monday?
Friday.
On a Friday? Okay, so that could catch them by surprise, the Friday.
It could. I mean, it was presented and shared. It was built by a committee of staff, that academic calendar, and then we build the workday around it. They know, they're asking about the April 26th, that day that we're kind of taking off in the spring. But we could certainly have this, this could be that special circumstance where we've done a new academic calendar that we've never done before. Or we could add some language that this is effective in the 24 to 25 school year.
I would probably, in my, my preference would leave it as a special circumstance, just because that, that creates a whole other thing of people seeing it. And, you know, supervisors know if they're, you know, honest or something. So I would, I think I'm happy with leaving that as special circumstances in that case.
My hunch is that if this applies to anybody, it's probably a very small group of people.
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say maybe one to two questions from our administrators, and then they are shocked to find out there's not actually a policy that says this is a restricted day for personal leave. And they're like, oh, it would be really nice if it were. But it is one to two. And, and it, it doesn't say shall, like we must deny. We typically will not approve these requests. Jury duty. We had two options for this. This is a change. Our current practice, we, if a staff member is summoned for jury duty, we ask that they reimburse us the rate that they receive from the courts, which is $12 a day. And we have language in there that says if they do not reimburse us, that we will not pay their wages for that time. We have found that now with everything going electronic, our staff have a very hard time turning over that $12 to us because it's given to them on a debit card or a prepaid Visa. In conversation, we feel like it is a civic duty, and the $12 typically doesn't even pay for the gas to get them to Kingman, and we would really rather not make it a punitive part of our policy manual. So we would like to change it, just that we will pay their regular base salary or wages, and we may require them to provide the summons or court documentation just to substantiate that they were actually on jury duty leave.
The only thing I would change is I would make them, provide the, I wouldn't leave that as an option.
Okay.
Because I think that's something that they need to do to, to have that. But I, I really like the idea of not making it punitive and leaving them have the $12.
Yes.
I agree. No punitive, that, that feels fair. And I also agree that it should be across the board. Like if we're gonna request the summons or the documentation, we should do it to all employees, otherwise it becomes sort of picking and choosing.
Okay. So a change of the may be required? Just taking a note real quick.
It's not like it's hard to get documentation for that.
No. No, it is not. And then rules on permitting employees to vote, no changes. Military leave, victim leave. This applies to all organizations that have 50 or more staff, which is us. And then bereavement leave. We currently have a policy on bereavement leave. We did want to make an update. So we've changed it. Right now, it currently stands five days of bereavement across the board, and you use your earned personal sick time, personal leave or vacation for bereavement matters. We would like to distinguish, it would be five workdays of bereavement per year for an in-state death, or up to 10 workdays of bereavement leave for an out-of-state death. We find that we have staff, you know, coming from afar, which is exciting because they're coming here to work for us, but then should they have a tragedy in their family, five days doesn't necessarily get them where they need to go and give them time for that process. That's the only change to this one. Authority to grant leave with the superintendent. These are extended leaves of absence. We do currently submit those to you on the human resources report on the consent agenda. They are kind of a rare occurrence, but once in a while FMLA runs out, or it's a brand-new staff member that doesn't qualify for FMLA. So we do bring that to you, and the superintendent has the authority to grant leave. And then absence without leave. This is one I'm, I'm happy to have in here. We don't have a definition in our current policy manual for job abandonment. It's been in our employee handbook, but it is really nice that it is here and would be legally backed by the trust for our staff that no call, no show for three consecutive days. It allows us and the supervisors to move on more quickly and, and hire for that position without having to wait. 4-400, workplace protections. This points back to, I think Mr. Moss's policy will cover these, on equal employment opportunity. So these things are covered in 1-202 and 1-203, and Title IX. I'm the Title IX coordinator for staff complaints. Employee grievances. This policy did not have any changes. It's just condensed and spelled out very succinctly. What is a grievance? Procedures for filing grievances, and then the different levels. And then the statute. Whistleblower protection, 4-403. This allows our employees protection to speak up and make a good faith disclosure if they know of wrongful conduct that, that we, you should all know about, to ensure that things are being handled with integrity and with the highest ethics. It outlines making the disclosure, how to investigate and make a determination. And then a lot of timelines in here. You'll see no more, no more than 45 days and 10 days. And 4-404, reasonable accommodations. I was very excited to see this. It is not in our current policy manual. So this just outlines our, our duties to our employees to support them despite any differences that they might bring with them to the workplace. And it describes the interactive process that we would, that us and the employee would take part in. And that concludes the human resources chapter. Any questions?
With that, members of the board, I will take us all the way back to chapter 100 for three quick policies. They're related to equal opportunity and nondiscrimination. Policy 1201 is equal education opportunity and nondiscrimination related to students. This one, similar to what you've heard before, takes a lot of policies and makes it very, sorry, very concise, where it cites legal references, and then the procedures work through how we support and handle these things. 1202 is equal employment opportunity and nondiscrimination. Very similar. Outlines the protections available. The highlighted change within this one just designates human resources for staff that are looking for accommodations, very similar to what Mrs. Bitterman just shared. And then it covers harassment, sexual harassment, reporting an incident, and that form is available for any complaints or concerns are available at the district office or in the staff portal. There's a non-retaliation. This is included in our normal policy and federal law, as well as state. And then outlines confidentiality and expectations. 1203 is Title IX. Similar to what Mr. Murray shared about how some of these policies make us happy because it outlines things so well. This is one myself and Mrs. Bitterman are very happy to have, because it outlines our process and the legal expectations for us through policy. So it outlines that here. Mrs. Bitterman is the Title IX coordinator for staff, and then I serve as Title IX coordinator for students. And policy does include both of our contact information, phone number, email, and our positions, and then provides all legal notices. Any questions on those? This is the, the much shorter of the two sections. Thank you. So now we will shift to chapter five. Chapter five is shared between myself and Dr. Festa. My portion is about 100 pages, so I'll try to be as concise and swift as possible. Chapter five relates to student enrollment and attendance. 5100, student enrollment and attendance. 5101 is attendance boundaries. Again, this cites law, references law. Our procedures outline what of, what our policy mostly was before. 5102 is enrollment requirements, which states the district will comply with all federal and state laws. 5103 relates to attendance and excused absences for student attendance. There are no changes here from current policy. 5104 relates to homebound or hospitalized students and students with chronic health problems. Again, that's Again, this matches very closely to current policy and practice as well as law. There are no changes within this policy. Five one oh five is open enrollment. This one does have a highlighted section. The policy from the trust came highlighted. Um, so I just wanted to draw attention that in certain circumstances, the board authorizes for us to give enrollment preferences. This does match current policy in terms of the preferences. Um, but the more, the board may at its discretion highlight another area for enrollment preferences.
So this just matches what we have right now?
Correct. Five one oh six is homeschool student participation in interscholastic activities. A student who is homeschooled and registered with the county superintendent is able to participate in activities through our district. A student from a charter school is not. Um, this matches current procedure and policy. That brings us to five two hundred, curriculum and instruction. Five two oh one is the flag display, U.S. Constitution and Bill of Rights. There's no change here from current policy. Five two oh two is students with disabilities, section five oh four. This again is largely based on statute and requirements. It includes child fine evaluation, some definitions, services. Um, it identifies that if any families have concerns or need procedural safeguards or support, they can reach out to me. That should be highlighted, I apologize. Um, then a grievance procedure is also included here but outlined in procedure. Five, excuse me, five two oh three, students with disabilities or IDEA. Um, this again, very similar to current practice and policy as well as law. Outlines things like child fine where we have a responsibility to identify students. Um, timelines are included in policy here. And then parental consent, a lot of things about evaluation, how we serve students is outlined here. There's no changes here. Actually, I apologize, there is one. Uh, when we get to additional procedures for identifying students with specific learning disabilities, there's three different options available depending on what and how you would like to qualify students. Um, we've selected and recommend option three, which is current practice within the district where we can use a state-adopted criteria or we can use a discrepancy model. Most of our school psychs use the discrepancy model. Um, but we do want to allow for both options. School psychologist and IEP teams will often base the decision to qualify a student based off of what will benefit the student the most. This allows them to continue that practice.
I'm good with option three.
I like option three too.
Thank you. Continuing on with this policy, additional group members identifies members of the IEP team that may be included. Um, and then again, just gets into some of those legal things about how we serve students, how we provide FAP, um, documentation required, assistive technology, SY. More or less the things we would see in a student's IEP or individualized education plan is covered here in policy, um, which is great practice and again matches what we currently do. And there's just lots of pages here about, again, the different parts.
It all looks good to me and I've got a child that is identified as special needs.
Thank you. So I'll, I'll pause while Mrs. Bitterman scrolls down to the end of this one. It's, it's a long one. And then again, our team will be revising our special education handbook to make sure our practices match policy very, very closely and we're serving students correctly. Yes. So now we're at five two oh four, students with disabilities, procedural safeguards. Um, again, very, very similar to common or current practice and procedure. Um, as a note for the board at the start of every IEP meeting and when we schedule them, we send a copy of the procedural safeguards to families just so they always have access to them. And this includes their rights to things such as independent evaluation, prior written notice, and then again, the safeguards. How to file a due process hearing. Um, again, aligns very closely with current policy. Sorry, I have very long ones. Five two one one is not a long one. It relates to class size. Um, so this states the governing board has the authority to set class sizes in partnership with the superintendent. And then staffing recommendations are based off of those. The policy allows that to happen. And then the procedures are the actual class size and staffing ratios that would partner with that, especially related to special education. Five two one two is students' club and activities. Um, this was an interesting one to look at for us because it often applies to districts that are not unified. Um, the way they had it set up for K six districts and then seven, eight. So we have both included here. Um, non-curricular activity is permitted. And again, this matches current practice and policy. Where we do allow non-curricular student activities for grades seven through 12 and non-curricular student groups are not required to be permitted in K through six. This allows us to have clubs and groups on campus.
So sorry, we're not required, but we do have some K through six clubs and things like that, a running club and a theater club and that kind of thing at some of the schools?
So they're not required to be permitted at the board level?
Okay, I see. Thank you.
And then with that not included here, but there will be procedures that outline expectations, both the advisor, the club, the function, how often they meet and all of those things. Five two one three is district-sponsored activities. Um, relates closely to the last one with extracurriculars, AIA and academic contests. Um, this states that will follow on state rules pertaining to those activities. Procedure for this will outline everything from eligibility to coaching requirements, things like that, that aligns very closely with our athletic handbook. Five three oh two is student attire. Uh, it includes prohibited attire. Um, relates to religious attire, tribal attire. Again, very similar to current policy in our handbooks. Five three hundred goes to student rights and responsibilities. Five three oh three goes to student records. Um, this is very legal-driven. Um, it relates to annual notification of what records we have, um notifies families and guardians of attendance, excuse me, currently in attendance of their rights under FERPA. Um, and then grants and confirms access to educational records to families. It does include information similar to current policy on where complaints can be directed. And then it does have us follow the retention schedule set by the Arizona Department of Library Archives and Public Records. No major changes there. Five three oh four is staff interviews of students and searches. This very closely aligns practice um and procedure. There is one area that we'd like to bring to the board that is different. Um, this is prohibited searches. There is an optional area here that we would like to include if the board approves, related to random drug searches and alcohol testing. Our current policy does not have this. Um, but we feel it's a positive to include just in case the board ever wanted to allow it. We currently do not conduct random drug or alcohol testing.
I think I'd need more time to think about that one.
Absolutely.
I just get a little tripped up on um sometimes random. It doesn't always come across as random. So I would just, I would need to think about it a little bit more.
Sure. And when I think of this, and we'll bring it back up for discussion, I think of if we ever brought in canines to search the campus in a random manner. This would allow that to happen, um, just as an example.
I, I think I agree. If, if we can just nail that down a little bit more about what would actually happen, that might be better uh in this. Or have some type of thing where if it's like a policy or procedure manual that we could direct to, say that would be it, but getting some more there.
Absolutely. The mechanics, I think, would be a great procedure and working file for the district. Five three oh five is a student code of conduct. We currently have a student code of conduct, um, very similar. And then this would partner closely with student handbooks. Five three oh six is student discipline, which relates to the code of conduct. Um, it outlines some definitions for us such as firearm, corporal punishment, suspension. And then outlines different procedures for student discipline, removal from classroom, suspension and expulsion for students. Again, all lining very closely with current practice and policy. It does outline suspension and expulsion hearings as well as the uh hearing officer and what the responsibilities are for the hearing officer in both suspensions and expulsions. This does include things such as an alternative to suspension program, similar to programs we've approved and put in place this year. Five four hundred relates to student health, safety and welfare. Five four oh one outlines expectations for a police interview for students. Um, this one is adjusted from current policy but does match what practice should be. Um, this outlines that when a police officer seeks to interview a student, there's a specific process for administrators to follow, especially related to notification of that student's family. Um, unless it's an emergent need and, and something that needs to be handled immediately and there isn't time. Or if notification of the family, such as with the DCS investigation, would be counterproductive to their investigation. So that's the policy and then there's a procedure that matches it and outlines those things. Five four oh three uh directly relates to current policy. Five four oh four, administration of medication. Again, very similar to current policy and practice. Comes over and outlines a lot of definitions for us, but then where certain things fall. General things, epinephrine, staff administration of that in emergencies, things that we currently have, but just brings it over so it's still there as well. And then there's work and procedures we'll have with the nurses team and then site administration to follow for all of these as well. Five four oh five is drug and alcohol prevention instruction. This is a policy that the board grants the district the ability to provide instruction on these things, um, both in the classroom, but then through programs such as Project Impact and Project Aware, which were approved earlier this year. Those would still be brought before the board, but similar to current practice allows that. Five four oh six is restraining seclusion. This matches current policy as well as state and federal laws, both for what it is, when it can be used and the training and notification required. There will be a procedure update that goes with this and it is a required training for all members of special education every year. Five four oh seven, discrimination complaints echoes the two policies from chapter one that we talked about when I started. Um, and that states that students may file a complaint if necessary. Five four oh eight matches current policy relating to hazing prevention. Um, it outlines the things that may come up during that and what is considered hazing. Complaints, how they can be made, where they go. And then there'll be a procedure that outlines what the investigation process and documentation of that should look like. Five four oh nine, very similar, matches current policy. This outlines harassment, intimidation and bullying related to students. Um, it outlines what is and what is not bullying. And then a procedure will follow that matches, similar to hazing, how it's investigated, how it's documented. Five four ten, interscholastic athletics. Um, this matches policy procedure in the athletic handbook related to AIA and sports. Some of the things in here that are highlighted just identifies the athletic director shall ensure that we have written consent for things like concussion awareness, heat things. The handbook is signed, we have physicals. Um, and that he or she is responsible for the program. This matches our current policy. Five four one one is school-based referrals for behavioral health services. This allows the district and the superintendent to develop procedures to refer to outside agencies and then have working relationships with them, including access. This matches current policy. And that is 101 pages of chapter five. Are there any questions? As you review, if you do have any, feel free to let us know. Thank you. I know, it's very exciting.
So we're still in chapter five in the curriculum and instruction section. So starting with five two oh five, gifted education programs and services. There is no change here and it mirrors pre- previous policy and how we conduct um gifted education in LHUSD. Five two oh six, English instruction. Really, this is just a very nice list of legal authority. Um, regarding English, English instruction, more will come back um through the procedures um that define um how students opt out. But that, that language really exists in the procedure section. Five two oh seven lays out curriculum adoption. Um, this again is very similar to previous policy. It does lay out a bit more clearly the differences about what is required for a K eight adoption um and what is required for a nine twelve adoption, although um it is very, very similar. Um, and uh clarifies uh the difference between supplementary and textbook adoption.
So uh for, for these, it's K eight to nine twelve. I know we did science and math eight to twelve. I'm sorry, seven to twelve. Uh, is this different than what we have been?
There's, there's really no difference. Um, it talks about, um, it's just a little bit different. If you look at before approval of textbooks for grades K eight, the board shall require all the Board shall require all meetings of committees authorized for the purposes of textbook adoption be open to the public and make available for a period of 60 days." And when you go to the 9 through 12, it requires it to be on the district website. Website, which for some reason, we're not required for grades K through 8 to put things on the website per law. I would say it's, it's working procedure that we do that. And you will get some procedures regarding these coming back up. 520208, Availability and Access to Instructional Materials. This defines what harmful materials are, sexually explicit materials. And then again, in alignment with previous policy and law, parents, it lays out the, the process for parents to request access to materials. 5209 is School Libraries, Media, and Resource Center. And again, this lays out that for schools that have a librarian, which we do not, we use a paraprofessional in that position. We are required to list all library books, but it is working procedure which you will get, that parents can view their child's library selections. 510, sorry, 5210 is Special Interest Materials. This just says that the district may offer an elective course about the Bible. 5214, Course Activity and Program Fees. This defines what we are able to collect fees on and what we are not able to collect fees on. There has been a change. The high school had been collecting fees on like science lab equipment, but that really is not aligned with what law tells us we can, so we've done away with that. But you can collect fees for costs associated with fine arts and vocational education courses for like the things that they make. And then it allows for principals to waive those fees. So we'll lay out in a procedure what that actual waiver looks like. 5215 is Loss and Damage Deposits. So we don't actually take deposits, but we could. It lays out that we can do deposits for musical instruments and band forms, but, but we do not require it. But if we were to ever require it, the board would need to adopt said policy. 5216 is Promotion and Retention of Students. So this allows for students to pre-promote it from one grade to another. There were two options here. There is an appeal in law that allows for a parent to appeal to the board about promotion and retention. That is in the Sit, the Student Intervention Team Handbook. We can continue to make sure that that's clear through procedure. But this would, the option one would allow the board to appeal a failing, uh, to appeal a failing grade for an individual course. We have not done, done that, and that is not what is recommended. So what is recommended is the board does not review individual, specific grades. 5217, Graduation. So this is a change to previous policy. We scrolled down just a tiny bit to that little right there. So we were requiring our high school students to take 23 credits. We were requiring them to take all of those credits, the three science, the one art, and then seven electives plus PE. It's not required by state law, and so we were requiring kids to take an extra credit, which has a lot of unintended consequences, whether that be to staffing, students who aren't passing, all of the things. So starting with next year, and in conversation with the high school, it will be seven electives, including one credit of PE, rather than in addition, the one credit of PE. 5218 is Sex Ed. So this is an optional policy. But whether or not we are teaching sex ed, which we currently are not in high school, this just lays out what the process would look like should we adopt any sort of sex ed in our schools. So my recommendation is that we put the policy in. 5219? No, that's...
Just, just kind of looking with this, this is just there for policy in case we want to put it in, just making it clear so that we have something to look at and engage the public with should we decide to do it later.
Correct. So while the policy is optional, I would actually, I would recommend that the board have the policy in there. It does not say that we're having sex ed, but it lays out the process for approval for anything related to sex ed, as opposed to removing it. I mean, we could go find it, but it seems to make sense that we would keep the process in the board manual.
I agree.
And that was 5218, right?
528.
528. 218.
Sorry, 5218.
And, Mr. President, members of the board, if you would like us to place a statement at the beginning that says currently we do not teach sex ed in any of our schools, and something related to the fact that should we decide to do that in the future, this is the policy that would be utilized, we can do that.
Yes, please.
Agreed.
Agreed.
5219 is Arizona Online Instruction. So this just states that for districts operating an AOI, which we do operate an AOI with Havasu Online, what is required for that, and that students must satisfactorily complete course requirements, participate in testing, and something that's important that, that is now in policy, that before we knew existed in law, but this really helps firm it up. Should we fall below 95% of state testing, a student can be removed from the AOI the following year, should they not test. And so that is a real trick. Mr. Berger has done an excellent job. All of our AOI students, we've completed that 95% in every area that we test, but it is a lot of work. And so this gives it a little bit of teeth to ensure that students come in for testing. It also lays out that, that students can be part-time in an AOI and part-time in the brick and mortar, which we have worked out this year with, with Mr. Becker, really starting to look at AOI students taking like CTE courses that we are not able to offer in the online environment.
Is that partial mortar, partial online option only available for students who might be taking a class that is not otherwise offered?
Correct. Yes, and so that's because we're now looking at multiple funding formulas, we really wanted to look at what that looks like in terms of funding, to see that actually actionable. And so for this time, we're really looking at just courses that are not available. 5301, Students Have a Right to Freedom of Expression. In that, there is, in the old JI-R, there was a complaint form. There's a lot of complaint forms in here for when we potentially, or someone feels we're violating a certain something. And so cleaning up what those complaint forms look like, if this becomes an issue. I think that may be it. And that's it for me.
Any other questions right now? So I just wanted to echo what Dr. Aron said, is that this is not some wholesale change in our policy. It is simply moving from ASMS policies to the Trust Model policies. As you've heard today, much of those are condensed, making it a little easier for staff to navigate. I will say that while a daunting process, I'm extremely proud of all of our directors as they have gone through every single word of their policies and figuring out how they match to the policies that we have and how they best serve our staff, students, parents, community. And I'm willing to go out on a limb and say that our directors are probably the most well-versed in policy, probably in the state of Arizona, because this took a lot of time and a lot of effort for them to go through. And we will obviously have procedures to follow through with a lot of these policies as well. But I'm looking forward to the conversation. I certainly took some notes of some things that we will take care of and talk again about this on Thursday, be it very briefly, because you've heard everything. And then again, we have, we have about a month and a half to kind of go back and forth, get some procedures to use, so you know where there's any information you might not have seen today, but where is it? And it would be in procedures. And then we, again, we'd ask for a vote in our June meeting to adopt the full policy manual.
So this just takes us from ASBA to the Trust?
Correct.
This is good.
End with legal protection. Anybody else? Any comments? I guess I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second that.
We're adjourned.
Got a vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I tried.
Premature gamble.
Yes.
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 We're adjourned.